The Board of Trustees Meeting of February 12th. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So first, we'll start with public comment. If anybody would like to come on up to the podium and just share your name and address.
I reside at 1550 Georgetown Drive. I am a Precinct 3 delegate in Bloomfield Township. Regarding item 10, the budget amendment for transfers to equipment in the replacement fund, why can't the board consider to post half of that amount to the February 2025 taxes to reduce the tax burdens on residents? I hope that's brought up in this conversation. I see no reason why we couldn't do that, and it would allow the township to collect interest on the payment until it is transferred for the future tax payments. My next part of my public comment is related to the retiree healthcare fund and some of the changes that were discussed during the, under item number 18, changing the investment policy to lump those funds together. I am deeply concerned about that because water and sewer funds are impacted in the water and sewer fund reserve. When they are overfunded, it adds a balance, and when they're underfunded, it removes a balance. According to the audit ending in 2023 financial year, that those assets went down 4.75%. The township is making a good return on cash in the bank at 5%. The township's approved corrective action plan also requires water and sewer to make additional contributions for the benefits, according to what was approved by the state. I think it's easy to see why those should be different because the need is different. I'd also like to call into question what was reported last August 28th. The township said that they had removed the public safety funds based on an asset valuation on April 1, 2020. For the period ending April 2021, those assets increased in the town fund by 36.16%. Yet, none of the information in the report to the board included any of those funds being transferred to public safety. It's probably about a $1.8 million shortage for our retiree healthcare fund for public safety, and if we can't get that right, we can't do a report to the board where those questions are asked and answered, I'm not sure we can consolidate those funds in an appropriate manner where people feel safe about their assets and the treatment of public safety. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the board for having me tonight. My name is Jake Barnett. I live at 4279 Stonely Road with my wife and two daughters. I'm here tonight to speak on why I feel I am a strong candidate for the zoning board of appeals alternate member position. I believe that I can be a value-add member for several reasons. First, this is home and always will be. Second, I have built a relevant skill set through a demanding career. Third, I have a personality that fits the role. And lastly, I'm looking for ways to get more involved. Let me elaborate. First, this is home. I grew up on Echo Road, played Little League at Way, baked ginger snaps at the Nature Center, and graduated from Andover High School. Now, I have my own home here where I live with my family. I'm building a career, and my daughters will be entering school. Our roots are deepening. We frequent the Nature Center, the farm, the public library. These institutions and buildings are what make our life so special. Bloomfield Township is home, and I want to play a part in its advancement. Second, I have a transferable professional skill set. I've spent the last five years as a management consultant where my job was to solve Fortune 500 companies' biggest problems. I led teams to quickly sort through vast amounts of information to find solutions, then communicate those solutions effectively to leaders, even if it wasn't what they wanted to hear. As a ZBA member, I will be able to get up to speed quickly, ask the right questions, and succinctly communicate my honest viewpoint. I'm not someone who is afraid to say no. My focus is on what is right rather than what is easy. Third, I have a personality that fits the role. At my core, I am kind, hardworking, and collaborative. I'm someone who can get along well with others to make our time meaningful and fun. I am passionate about my work and immerse myself in the details. Moreover, I appreciate all points of view and believe collaboration and teamwork produce the best results. Lastly, I have a desire to get more involved. I'm excited about the prospect of being a community leader, and I'm looking for new opportunities to get involved. The ZBA is an excellent step in further integrating myself into Bloomfield Township, learning more about how our township functions, and supporting and advancing our community. I appreciate the board's consideration of my candidacy. I assure you, if given the opportunity, I will make a value-add member to the zoning board of appeals. Thanks for your time.
I'm Ron Barant, 2182 Lost Tree Way. I think some of you may know I've been around here pretty much forever. May not know that I actually live in the home where my Cub Scout troop met. wound up buying it from the previous owners who've been there since '75. I'm here tonight about the position with the ZBA, of course. I think you have my background material already, so I'll make the recap brief. I've had previous ZBA experience in Beverly Hills, vice chair. I wrote the village's manual for what a zoning ordinance is and what a zoning variance is. We reshaped the zoning ordinance while I was there to bring one square mile of the village into compliance after 50 years of being 95% non-conforming, which was probably a record somewhere, I think. So after that, of course, council service. I've held a builder's license for 30 years, which gives me some insight into the arguments that will be made and sometimes the arguments that should have been made. But where I think I might be of some use is actually my day job. My area specialty is electrification safety, electrified vehicles, hybrid vehicles, this trend that is going to continue to grow. Now, that has implications that affect our structures. Most of our existing housing stock has been here for some time. Most of our electrical services, a lot of these houses were built with 60 amp or 100 amp services. Some were built with 200 amp services, but if you're going to start charging two electric pickup trucks, you're going to be bringing in at least another 200 amp service. At the same time, of course, my area, emergency response, safety, et cetera, I'm keenly aware of how people are sensitive to the issues of lithium ion batteries. And that is already starting to prompt some talk of, gee, why don't we go back to detached garages? Well, of course, the actual statistics, there's a lot of background, and it's not nearly as clear-cut as some of the news stories would make you think. But there's also what I call the Hindenburg effect, where people are going to react to the stories, and I think the ZBA can expect over the next 10 years, between the utility issues of having to adapt their home to have a lot more electrical power moving through it, and the trouble you have with bringing in your new underground utility services relative to how you build the addition to the structure, that's going to be one headache for the ZBA, and the other is just going to be, I don't want to park the car in my house. I want to build this big building out in my front yard to put it in instead, and things of that nature. So I think my background at work may give me some insight to help there, which whether you put me in as an alternate member or not, please feel free to call on me in the future. Thanks.
Anyone else here?
Hello. My name's Andrew Mensing. I'm also here for the ZBA. I've spent most of my time in IT. I've got 25 years' experience in IT. This would be a very different role, but I think one I could contribute to and help with. I sent you guys all my resume. I have last 10 years working in federal government experience, again, in IT, been in the Detroit region most of my life, but grew up in a smaller town in Michigan. So we moved here in 2016. My wife and two children moved here for the schools. We've got two kids in the school districts and just very happy with that. I do some volunteer work with the schools and with sports teams and things like that. So thank you for considering my application.
Thank you.
I'm David Rand. I'm also applying for the ZBA position. I am yet to be at 4445 Pine Tree Trail, waiting for my house to be finished, and hopefully that will be in a few months. I've been a resident of Bloomfield for about 25 years, and I think most of you are probably familiar through what I've already submitted about my background, what I'm capable of. And my wife suggests that as I get older, I'm getting to be more of a curmudgeon, so I think my personality will probably fit as well. Anyway, I believe very strongly in community coming together. That's really why I'm volunteering. I believe in the power of when people come together and try to impact and make a change in the community, and I am happy to serve, and I appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public comment. Next, we have the board minutes of January 22nd. We have any changes? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Second.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next, we have the board study session for the joint FSC and retiree healthcare minutes of January 24th. Again, if there's no changes, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next, we have the board study session draft 2024-25 budget minutes of February 8th. Again, if there's no changes, I'd look for a motion.
It was February 6th.
Sorry, February 6th.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray. Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So next, we have promotions of officers and office for the fire department presented by Chief John Leroy, Assistant Matt DeRousse, Inspector Pete Blahouse. Wow, everybody.
Officer's gonna come up here tonight.
Operations Officer Cardinelli.
Thank you for having us. It's been a long process here with, between hiring and promotions that have had been delayed by the holidays and national championship football games and everything like that. So we're happy to be here tonight to swear in and officially promote three officers and swear in four new probationary firefighters. If I could have Operations Officer Cardinelli, please come up here. Operations Officer Cardinelli started in 1996, rapidly promoted through the ranks as a lieutenant, followed by a battalion chief. He has really excelled in everything that he's ever done in the department at the level of battalion chief from managing a shift and everything associated with that. And when this position came open again, it's been open for a while, but with us being able to fill it, he was the perfect candidate to fill this job. He is a graduate of the Eastern Michigan School of Staff and Command, and he is now what we commonly refer to as the face of the fire department. So if I could have Clerk Brook, he's gonna swear in Kevin Cardinelli to be Operations Officer.
Cardinelli, please raise your hand if you have to me. Aye, Kevin Cardinelli.
Aye, Kevin Cardinelli.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Operations Officer.
The duties of Operations Officer.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
And that's my bill. To the rest of my community.
If I could please have Amy come up to present Kevin with his badge.
Yeah. Yes, please.
So you guys all just saw my wife Amy, my daughters Mallory and Kara. Please stand up. My father Lou, his friend Joe, my mother-in-law Mary, my daughter-in-law Mo, and Austin over there is Mallory's boyfriend. I truly appreciate the wonderful support they have all given me in some way, and all the firefighters. Chief's support. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and it's been a pleasure to work here. So thank you all.
Thank you.
If I could have Lieutenant Rob Nichols and Lieutenant Chris Hall, please come to the front. Oh, you get to both of them out there. Lieutenant Rob Nichols started with the department in 2003. He is a member of the Oakway Hazmat Team. Rob has been an integral part of the department for over 20 years. We hired him together, and he was actually one of the first people when we switched to an all-medic type program that was moved from a basic EMT and tested and became a paramedic. So he was, back then, was very integral in moving forward in the new vision of the department. Lieutenant Chris Hall was promoted last week. Started with the department in 2011. Chris is the head of the Oakway, he's our department representative on the Oakway Hazmat Executive Board. He also handles all of the purchasing of any equipment, and anything you throw at him, he gets it done before he leaves my office. It's, he's already got, I already have an email that the projects aren't underway. He also holds the distinction of being the first sergeant to ever be promoted to lieutenant. Sarcasm. We don't have any sergeants in the organization. But with that, I would like to present Lieutenant Chris Hall and Lieutenant Rob Nichols.
Please raise your hand if you have to me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Christopher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of lieutenant.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
And that's my bill. And that's my ability.
If I could please have Jen come up and present him, Rob, with his lieutenant's badge. And if I could have Sherry come up and please present Chris with his lieutenant's badge.
Thank you everyone. My family, my wife Jennifer, my daughter Lexa, my sister Marianne, my mom Jo.
Mine, these are only three. So my wife Sherry's here, my daughter's May, and my daughter's Cody.
Congratulations. If I could have Cody, Katie, Sarah, and Alec, please come up. It's kind of nice. We actually have some probationary firefighters that have come to us, and we've been able to hire a few lately. Cody Landry came to us from, through the OCC Fire Academy. He actually got to know Bloomfield Township a little bit through a couple of our lieutenants in his previous job of, he is a rigging coordinator and a climbing expert, which will come in handy in his new career that he has now. He's currently in medic school, and he's been a great asset to the department so far. Katie Guckian came to us from, through OCC, and we can actually say that she was going to pursue a route as a police officer slash firefighter before she chose correctly. She is a graduate of the OCC Fire Academy. Sarah Lydic, she has probably the most different background that she's ever, you've ever heard of. She comes to us from New Zealand. She's a township resident, and she found us through the FireTech program that we have. She came in and loved everything about it, and she wanted to work for the Bloomfield Township Fire Department. And Alec Fowler, he just came to us from the west side of the state, previously Colorado, and over in Greenville, and he actually found us, and he came in, and he rode along with us and decided that this was somewhere that he wanted to be, and we greatly appreciate it. So if I could please have Clerk Brook administer their oath of office.
You'll have to smile, too.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Sarah.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of firefighter, emergency medical technician.
Of firefighter, emergency medical technician.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
And that's my bill. And that's my ability.
If I could please have Lucia come up and present Cody with his badge. If I could have Michaela come up and present Katie with her badge. If I could have Justin come up and present Sarah with her badge. And if I could have Julia come up and present Alec with his badge. Alec, if you'd like to say who's in here, who's here for you?
Yeah, so my wife Julie's here, my father-in-law Rich, I'm from the west side, and my dad from Colorado.
And Cody.
This is my wife Lucia.
This is my son Xander, and my daughter Esme.
My husband Justin, I've got my husband Hazel and Rose, and my mother-in-law Tammy and Tom, and my aunt Hankel, Johnny, Chris, thank you.
Do you want a picture of all of you? So one, because Mike's taking pictures, she's got to get a shot.
Sure.
You're in a good spot, Mike. So you want to bring up the other three gentlemen, too?
Yeah.
You can all take one, but we don't have to space out that much.
Everybody, psych.
One close family.
Crowd in. Okay.
They'll go help him catch up to Nick.
Thank you very much for having us.
And Kevin, you got to start posting. You got to catch up to Nick. He's had a few years on you.
Don't worry.
I expect some competitions between the police and you. Thank you, everybody. So next, we'll go on to our, considering the appointment of an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals, and we have our planning director, Patty Volker, here to introduce the item.
So good evening. As we heard during public comment, we have four very qualified candidates to be considered for the vacant position in the zoning board of appeals. It is an alternate position, meaning that it will be called upon should a regular standing board member not being able to attend a meeting. The board meets once a month, and this is for a two-year term, which expires on January 1, 26. So we're asking the board to consider the information that's been part of your packet. You received a cover memo, a resume, and some additional information. And should the board want to proceed with one of these candidates, we do have a zoning board of appeals meeting tomorrow night. So depending on availability, we certainly could swear in that candidate now to become a member and bring him on board and obviously have an orientation shortly thereafter. So if you have any questions, but I know our candidates are here, should you have any further information that you need to glean from them.
Does anyone want to start with any questions of Patty or any discussion or questions of individual? We normally don't question applicants, but if you'd like to have a discussion, anybody want to start?
It's nice that they all came tonight. We all get to see them, hear them speak. We really appreciated them taking that time. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Went from one of the best parts about this job to one of the worst parts.
Picking?
Having to pick among such qualified applicants.
Yeah, I was just going to say it's nice that we have this many involved residents that want to be part of this, right? At times, we're trying to find people that'll fit now in the mold. We get four really good, involved residents who have a wide range of experiences who want to be involved in our community. That's a great problem to have. We're pretty lucky to have that, and we want to thank each one of you guys for taking time out of your day to come here, be part of our township, be part of what we're doing here. So thank you, guys, no matter what happens. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
This is definitely something other supervisors have asked. How do we get people to apply, let alone quality people? And I said, we're just, we are blessed, because definitely we are, the think tank that's out there in Bloomfield Township is pretty amazing. We're pretty blessed.
So what's with the sheet of paper that just got handed out? So what's with the sheet of paper that just got handed out?
Okay, so this is a ranking form that has been prepared. And it asks if this is the pleasure of the board, that each of us would rank the candidates, one through four. One being the most preferred candidate and sort of like the lowest score, like golf score, would be the prevailing candidate. There's one obvious choice after a first round through, that person could just... A motion, we appoint the person, similar to Mr. Kalinsky recently.
It worked out.
And if not, we perhaps take the top two and re-rank them, is the proposal that I have.
My vote forfeited?
Why?
Oh, wait a minute.
I'm there.
Here, we'll add your vote.
I don't know, maybe I was... You know.
You know, we took a template from the last one and you couldn't vote for that one.
Ah, that was true.
Okay.
So now you're on there.
So you've got to be a write-in, Michael.
I'm a write-in? Okay.
But you still count. So is there any discussion or do you want to go straight to voting?
I'm liking some discussion.
Yeah.
I echo what my colleagues have said. We're very fortunate to have such great candidates for the alternate position on the ZBA. As someone who was on the ZBA for four years and was a great grooming ground to be on the board and become familiar with all of the different departments and ordinances, et cetera, with the township. As we recall, we started about the same time, didn't we?
We did.
Yes, we did. Anyway, very fortunate to have such great people. For me, can we even talk about... You want to talk about the candidates? For me, one person really stands out. I mean, they're all really great. But Jake Barnett, who is not related to me, I find him to be the type of person that I would like to see more involved with the township. He has a great background, he's very bright, he's very personable. Had the opportunity to meet with him and was very impressed by him. He has the type of personality, I think, will pick up things very quickly, has a great business background, worked on his own in a great family business that he's been very involved with. And I think also the fact that he grew up in the township, he's decided on his own to continue to live in the township and raise his family here. He's made that commitment, things happen, but he certainly plans on staying here, which I think says a lot. And I would like to see more people involved in the township who are raising families and have a... You know, maybe have a different viewpoint than some of us have been around a long time. So it's a good blend of different perspectives and I'm very supportive of Jake Barnett.
Yeah, I would echo those. I share those sentiments as well. I have the honor and pleasure of serving on the zoning board of appeals. So I liked that Mr. Barnett said that it's about what is right, not what is easy, because that's what it's all about on the zoning board. And I definitely think he would be a great addition to the roster that we already have.
Who else want to join in? I personally have two people. I think you're all amazing. There are two that took the time to come and out of their day also to come in person and meet with a few of us at Town Hall. Both Jake and David. David, I remember from Manor Road. I'm sure Neil and Michael, you would remember him as well. He was the president of the HOA when we were going through all of that issue, which obviously went to court and we won. So he helped with that. And then also, he's currently going through the permitting process, as you know, he's moving to a different home. So he has a lot of the knowledge that you need to deal with neighbors coming in those. And then I also did like the vision that Jake had as well. So those were kind of my two leading... I can't pick. So I'm personally kind of in a dead heat, so those are my two favorites.
Well, I think that we had a really great collection of candidates. One of the things that stood out to me, and I agree with what's already been said, that's why it's a hard decision. But Mr. Burnt, you know, had previous experience on the ZBA. His point to me really kind of rang true about, you know, we're changing and we're going more electric and concern over the power. Can our houses handle the power? I'm married to an electrical engineer, so I get that. And, you know, we were just looking at houses for my son this weekend and it was an old house. And my husband's immediately going, "Well, they don't have a ground there and they don't have GFIs and they don't have this." And it's like, you know, it's important. It's safety, it's fire risk. And so I valued that also in that candidate, because his background I think is very relevant.
Yeah, I'll speak on that. I obviously echo most of my counterparts here. Mr. Burnett, I appreciate that he'd been on other boards and that knowledge and experience is important, as well as the construction background. But on similar boards, we also like diversity of thought. Having people with different backgrounds and different stages of their life to come up with a collective thought process and brings different perspectives to these boards. So we had done that on our financial sustainability committee with people with different backgrounds in order to come together. And that pick ended up being great. In our first board, she was bringing policy things and different thought than just investment policy, and it was great. So I then echo that Mr. Barnett, not related to Trustee Barnett, could be a great candidate because he has a diversity in thought, but still has a management and consulting background, be able to make hard decisions, right? It is tough to say no, and you're going to say no a lot. It's great when you can say yes, but people are still unhappy when you say yes. So whatever you are in this position, or whoever gets the position, it's going to be very tough. So you need to be able to have the tough skin to be able to make the right decision based on the information you have. And I think if you're in management consulting for five years, you've said yes a lot and you've probably said no a lot. So I think he would be towards the top of my list, as well as Mr. Burnett, he has... Burnt. Burnt, sorry, would also have some good experience based on his background.
Well, you know, I could certainly add kudos to any of the candidates, just because I think it's cool and a good qualification. Andrews has a TSSCI Defense Security Clearance. And as somebody who held a TSSCI security clearance, I know that means you've got to be a pretty good guy to get that. So, very...
No bias there, right?
You know, no arrests, you know, nothing fun, just basically, you know, whatever. Okay, so I think that's great. And I think that having the background of the programming and all that kind of stuff, I think lends itself well to understanding the rigid formulaic approach that each ZBA applicant and application is addressed to. So I did want to call Andrew out for that and say that I think that that's something that we shouldn't discount. But otherwise, you know, I met with David, David Rand, and Jake Barnett. Very impressed with both. And so I'm certainly torn, and I haven't had a chance. I didn't meet Mr. Mensing, but I just, you know, it's hard to get one of those clearances. So, all right, so that's all I got. It's a tough, tough case.
Yeah, it is. And thank you, gentlemen, for applying for this position. You know, the materials you submitted were extensive. You've spent a lot of time on that, no doubt. We all appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you all for being here tonight, as has already been stated before. You know, for the reasons stated already, I believe that Mr. Barnett, Jake, would be the right person for the ZBA alternate position this time. I think that our other candidates are also excellent. And any one of them would be really, would be really great, in fact. But I have to make a choice, who's my top candidate? And the request here on the form is to rank them one through four. Lowest score is the one that moves through with the lowest two scores.
Golf score.
Golf scores.
Lowest is better.
So take your time when you do that, and then I guess Supervisor Walsh is the last person? No, you've already said something.
No, I said something, because there was some... I'm not used to the silence.
Yeah.
Usually everybody's really good, but I will say that it was pretty interesting and I liked. Every single person was mentioned. That shows how diverse and great this group is.
It has to be public.
Oh, okay.
It has to be public.
Gotcha.
So we have to...
Mr. Barnett, you want to...
Rank your...
Yeah. First choice is Jake Barnett. Second choice is Mr. Rand. Third choice, Mr. Mensing, and Burnt, number four.
Do you want to go next, Ms. Marie?
My first choice is Mr. Burnt. Second, Barnett. Third is Rand. And fourth, Mensing.
Thank you. I guess I might as well go next. One is Barnett, two is Rand, three is Burnt, and four is Mr. Mensing.
I have Barnett, one, Burnt, two, Rand, three, and Mensing, four.
I have Barnett, one, Burnt, two, Rand, three, Mensing, four.
And I have Rand as one, Barnett as two, Mensing, three, and Burnt, four.
Oh, I forgot, you went on there! I'm sorry!
You set me up for failure on this one. Michael?
We love you.
Would you like to join the team, Michael?
If Michael is due.
Oh, right.
Feeling overlooked and, you know, we're so bad down there.
Yeah, so as I said, everything was so tough. I put Jake Barnett, one, Andrew Mensing, two, Rand, three, Burnt, four.
So based on my account of what we have here, Mr. Barnett, Jake, has one, two, three, four, five number ones. And, you know, there's... At that point, it's already, you know, five votes in favor of Mr. Barnett. I would therefore make a motion to appoint Mr. Jake Barnett as the alternate ZBA member.
Support.
We have a motion by Clerk Brook, support by Trustee Volker, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Are you available tomorrow night?
Congratulations!
Great, so for the others, I would like to say that we do have other committees that are going to be joining, like the strategic plan that will be appointed. We'll be bringing in March and picking an RFP winner for that. So we will have some others that will be joining. So please, please don't stop up.
And one last thing, I prepared four oaths of office for tonight, and I'm pulling out the one for Mr. Barnett. If you have a minute to join me up here, we'll swear you in.
Well, thank you again to all the candidates. We really do appreciate it. Congratulations.
So next we have a public hearing for considering the approval of a site plan, a special land use request for Primrose Daycare at 6255 Telegraph Road. We have Deputy Director Andrea Bibby.
Hi, good evening. I am Andrea from the Planning Division. Nice to see everybody. So what you have before you is a site plan application. For some of you, this is your first opportunity to see this proposal. The property that we're talking about is located at 6255 Telegraph Road. That is on the east side of Telegraph, north of Maple Road. You can see here, highlighted on your screen, outlined in the red line, shows the entire parcel in which we're talking about. This property was previously the home of the St. Andrews Church until the building was recently demolished and now sits vacant. It immediately... It sits in front of the Samaritan, formerly known as Samaritan Senior Housing Community. So that's the piece of property that we are talking about here on your screen. To talk about zoning a little bit, the property itself is actually zoned multi-family residential. And the proposal of a childcare facility is actually a special land use within the zoning classification of the multiple-family residential, which you'll see is highlighted again up there on your screen. So that we're familiar with the property, I can get a little bit more into the details in terms of the site plan itself. We have a proposal on behalf of 814. They are the LLC that is proposing the construction of this one-story, 13,525 square foot, one-story childcare facility. You can see the outline and the site plan, which is shown up on your screen. So on the very far left-hand side would be the northbound Telegraph. And then immediately, directly behind it, which would be our east, would be the senior housing. And then immediately to the south would be the Medical Center, the Bloomfield Medical Center. So with the proposal, they are seeking, like I said, to construct a one-story building. It is a special land use. And then also, in addition to it being a special land use that we review it under because of the use, it is also, we also have specific criteria within our zoning ordinance as it pertains to childcare facilities. I can just review those briefly and let you know that they do, the applicant does comply with these provisions within our ordinance. One of these provisions is that such uses should not include dormitories. There's no dormitories. This is proposed to be a daycare center that will serve children from the ages of six months to six years old. And they are proposed to operate Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. So there's no dormitories with this operation. The next is that they have to maintain a minimum of 100 square feet per children for outdoor play. The applicant is proposing, and actually I can highlight here on your screen the site plan itself. There is a total of play area, so outside play area associated with this daycare facility that exceeds 9,000 square feet, we're looking at about 9,200. And up on your screen here, you can see this is the proposed building here, laid out. And then around the exterior to the north, as well as to the rear property to the east...
Wait, somebody else is doing it too.
Yeah.
You don't need to do it. She's got her pointer on it.
I'm doing it for the TV.
Okay, I'll let him do it then. This is great.
Okay, then yeah, then you might do it. It's too confusing with two pointers.
We were kind of in sync though. It's kind of a good...
Dancing around.
So what they are proposing is an outdoor play area. Actually, technically, there's three outdoor play areas. That area that I just talked about to the north, as well as to the east of the property, which would be in the rear of the building, will be, is proposed to be fenced off by a six-foot-high fence, which would be aluminum material, decorative aluminum fencing, as well as they are, and I will get to that in a moment, but there's a landscape plan that's associated also with that. But in terms of the play area, as I stated earlier, they do, they have a total of 9,000 square feet. They have different play areas designated for different age groups. So they do meet that qualification within our ordinance in terms of meeting the outdoor play area. The other criteria that we look at is that the overall play area has to have a total of at least 2,000 square feet, which I stated they have over 9,000, so we're good there, as well as it has to be screened in, which I've indicated there is proposed six-foot screening to screen in this play area, as well as some fencing that lies in between those play areas to separate it based on the use of equipment and based on the equipment, as well as the age of the children. So that is also something that's... So another thing that does exist on the site, there is, immediately to the north, they do abut the Cranbrook... It's the Cranbrook Chase condominiums to the, immediately to the north. And there is currently an eight-foot-high masonry screen wall between those, between this property and the property to the north. We do have our applicant here. He can speak shortly and he can also explain that he had meetings with those neighbors. They've been very positive and very supportive of the project. They just want to make sure that their eight-foot masonry wall does not have any damage or doesn't incur anything throughout the construction. But overall, they've been very supportive of the project, so I just want to report that. So as I stated earlier, there was a variance required for a six-foot fence. We only permit a four-foot fence. I also want to note that they did, the applicant did receive a variance for a four-foot fence located in the front yard. And if I can use my highlighter. The four-foot fence is located in the front of the building. And that is to allow for safe access for children that can exit out of their classrooms. There's doorways in each classroom. They can exit to the front and then safely and securely be taken to the different play area. So that was a variance because that's a fence in the front yard. Although I will say, when we show the landscape plan, they've done a good job in adding any additional vegetation to soften that fencing from Telegraph Road, as well as the Green Belt along Telegraph Road. So I don't, they've done a good job in terms of softening that view, and it is for a safety issue, which is why they've asked for it. asked for it. Lastly, the last of the criteria for daycare facilities, any use herein for a daycare facility has to be the interior of a multiple-family zoning district within our class, within our zoning ordinance. In this instance, as I showed you earlier on our zoning map, you can see that this is probably one of our few individual sites that sits housed perfectly within the residential multiple-family district. So they do meet that qualification as well. Let's see, as I stated earlier, that they do abut the Cranbrook Chase to the north. To the east is the Samaritans. And then there's a little portion of the property you can see up on your screen, which is also orange, which still belongs to the Samaritans. And then below that is the Bloomfield Medical Village, Bloomfield Milk, which is 01 classification directly below there.
What's the new name? Samaritans closed. Is it now?
I think it's called New, I wasn't quite sure. I think it's called Autumn House.
Autumn, not, okay.
Autumn's House or something. Yes, yes. I keep referring, it's a Samaritans, because I believe it's, I do know the name has changed.
Yeah, they sold it.
Yeah, yeah. So with that, we do, we have a little bit more about the site plan. Based on the usage in the size of the building, they are required to provide a total of 46 parking spaces. They have provided those 46 parking spaces on site, so they meet that requirement. We also have had, I just want to touch base in terms of ingress, in egress from the building. After conversations that the applicant had with, with MDOT, as they are the authorizing body of the, of Telegraph Road, they did, if some of us know the property as it stands now, there was an existing, not really improved curb cut, which was located here, north of the site, that has been removed. As, and then also, the existing curb cut will be shifted a little bit further to the south. So there is going to be one ingress, an egress to the site with that, the removal of that curb cut. That is in accordance with the, the desires and design standards of Michigan Department of Transportation. The good news is, is they're not going to be doing any construction or any widening or adding any lanes to Telegraph Road, because it's already three lanes there. MDOT sees that far right-hand lane that takes you into the, the center as, that operates as the D cell lane, which allows people to get in and out. We did have a traffic study that was provided by the applicant. That traffic study was reviewed by our traffic engineer. You guys have a copy of his memo, Michael Abity, within our packet. And in his memo dated November 8, 2023, he finds that the traffic impact analysis was completed consistent with the accepted traffic engineering practices, and finds that the development is expected to have a minimal impact on the surrounding roadwork. Let's see. Talking a little bit about the landscaping. As I stated earlier, here is that curb cut. So the, the removal of the northerly curb cut, as well as the shifting of the existing curb cut, which is located more, probably in this location across from the crossover, is shifting to the south. So in terms of the landscape, and, oh, this is a, a example of every time we have a site plan application, we do have our fire department has to go in and have, we do have the applicant show all the turning radii to ensure that there is a safe access in and out of the site. And the, we do have a report from our fire marshal that is satisfied, satisfied with the configuration as presented. As you can see on your screen, here's an example of the floor plan made up of basically classrooms. There's no kitchen. They serve warm snacks throughout the day, but they don't necessarily have a full kitchen. And as you can see, highlighted on the exterior of it is those doorways that I talked about earlier, in which the kids can access the exterior. And in the front, north Telegraph, they can exit into a safe, safe enclosed area. They are providing a dumpster enclosure, which would be required. I'll show that on the site plan, so we know where that's located. The proposed dumpster enclosure is located here. And that will be, that will be comprised of masonry block, as well as a gate, which is required within our ordinance. So that has been provided as well. In terms of landscaping, since the, this site plan went before the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board, they actually have amended their landscape plan and have extended the green belt to the southerly portion, frontage of Telegraph Road. In, in addition, they have added on some calipers onto the deficient tree calculations that they had. So they were able to, based on our calculations with their tree removal and requirement, the applicant is required to, is deficient by 270 calipers. Originally, they were short, they were at 145.5 calipers. Now with the new plan, they're 186.5 missing. So they've increased it by 83 caliber inches since Planning Commission and Design Review Board. So that would, that would say that that's a, a better landscape plan that was previously provided, as well as I stated that they're adding the, the, extending the green belt to the south of that curb cut, as they were not previously. So that's what, that's what you're looking at there. With that, I can go through the standards for the special land use. So anytime we're looking at a use that may have, oh, I'm sorry, back to landscaping. I mean, that changes subject. We are, they are proposing to have evergreen plantings that will be on the exterior of the six-foot fence. They did some, they were able to do a little bit of shifting. They shifted the building over about two feet towards Telegraph, and it gave them a little bit more room to be able to add the requested vegetation and required vegetation, really, along that fencing. So this rear play area really backs up to the carports at the senior housing. So there's not immediately, there's not an immediate impact. But in terms of visibility and sound and just the aesthetics of it will be screened and managed better through that vegetation.
And it'll be on the opposite side of it. It almost looks like it's on the inside of the fence instead of the outside of the fence.
It's on the outside of the fence.
So then it protects the view from the others, not their view?
Correct. So that you can see the evergreen planting. Another thing in which this project went to the zoning board for is they did seek a variance to install a transformer. The transformer is located near that eight-foot-high, or no, that, eight-foot-high masonry wall? Eight-foot-high masonry wall. They are proposing to locate it there, so there would be no visibility, as well as they're offering some screening vegetation to be around that transformer. That location was chosen because it made the most sense in sort of terms of safety and security, that it's not within the, it's not within the fenced-in area. So it's not immediately adjacent to the building, but it is in a location which is deemed safe and secure for, for the applicant. And then here we have the presentation of the materials. The, the, this is a Primrose childcare facility. We can, again, we can have our applicant, Bradford Egan, is in the audience. If he, he can come up shortly after my presentation and explain that this is a prototype model that's been tried and true. This is a business that has, has many established locations throughout the country. And this is their standard prototype, you know, for their design. The materials themselves are made up of a metal roof, board and battened siding in an Arctic white color, and a stone-capped wainscoting along the base of the building, shutters, and a decorative weather vane element on the rooftop. So this is the, this would be the Telegraph Road frontage, with the intention, again, as I stated, with the evergreen screening kind of hiding that four-foot fence, as you can see behind it. And then in addition to that evergreen screening along that fence in the front yard, they also have that green belt vegetation plantings that they will be adding in the Telegraph Road frontage. In terms of signage, the applicant is, would be required to make a separate application to the Design Review Board. I believe that they're still under some conversations in terms of what their signage package will be, because our ordinance only permits one. So, so that would be still forthcoming before the Design Review Board. So we're not making any final determinations this evening in terms of signage. They have provided a photometric plan, which shows all the onsite lighting and showing that it complies with any spillover. We have a requirement that zero the lot line. That was provided as well. And then lastly, we have some photographs of the site. As, these are, these are, here are some drawing, some different renderings, if you will. You can see a little bit more of the, the features. Any rooftop mechanicals will have to be screened from public view with materials similar to the building. And then here is the site as it is now. It's a very overgrown sign. So, let's see. This did have an opportunity to be reviewed by our various departments. We do have approval from both the Fire Department, Police Department, Engineering, Environmental Services has, has signed off on it with the understanding and a letter within your packet from the Water Resource Commission, indicating that they would be, they would have the ability to discharge within to the Nichols Drain, which is a county drain. So we have provided that documentation, as well as our reviews by Michael J. Dual, our landscape, as well as Fishbeck, our traffic engineer. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I would ask that the board take under consideration the, the conditions within your packet, which would include compliance with the requirements of the Township's Department, compliance with the requirement of the Township's Landscape Architect, as referenced in his February 6, 2024 letter, which indicates that the applicant should submit payment to the Woodland Fund for the tree replacement shortfall that I, that I, that I spoke of. And then lastly, applying to the Design Review Board for the overall signage proposal. And that is it.
So before we open the public comment for the public hearing, does the applicant want to come on up and explain, add anything?
Thank you very much. I'm Bradford Egan. I'm with 814 Services. We are a local company, but we are developers of high-quality developments across the country. We look to partner ourselves with concepts that enrich communities, such as daycare facilities, urgent care, medical uses. We've recently brought on a veterinarian hospital. So we go around and they tell us where they want to be. We go in the country, we find the land, we bring it to them, they approve it. We build the, we entitle it, we build the building for them, we lease it back to them. That's our business model and our, and our motto for our company is enriching communities through real estate. So we want to make sure that what we propose is going to enrich your community and not take anything negatively away from it. What we're proposing, as Andrea so gracefully did, was, is a daycare facility that's 13,525 square feet. It sits on approximately two and a half, or 2.17 acres, with a play area of 9,402 square feet. And we are offering 46 parking spaces that are in accordance with the parking ordinance for this use. Regarding Primrose daycare centers, they are a company that is noticed as one of the top-ranking daycare companies in the country. They've been in business for over 40 years. They have 450 locations across the country. They have a keen eye on the quality of the education that they give their students. And that quality, that eye on being the best, carries over into the design of their buildings, which you can see from the materials that they use, the layouts that they use, and the expense that they go to to make sure that, that it does live up to the communities that they endeavor to be in. Each classroom has an egress door that exits out into the gated area. We keep the fencing to surround those, those doors, so that it is a safe and secure environment for each and every child. We have adhered to the landscaping requirements of that fencing, and we will be covering all of the fencing with evergreen tight plantings around the entire perimeter, even the area between the north fence and the eight-foot masonry wall that is part of the Cranbrook Chase condo association. I did meet with three members of the Board of Cranbrook Chase Condo Association at the Bloomfield Township Library, which is a lovely place. Sandy Morrison, who is the president, Tom Decort, who is the secretary, and Shay Pendre, who is the vice president of the Board of that condo association. We went through, we spoke for about an hour, and we went through every part of the plan, every aspect. There was a very positive feedback from them on what we were building, how it would be a nice amenity for the community. And as Andrea had alluded to, the only thing they asked is that we don't damage their eight-foot masonry wall. So we will be keen on not doing that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the, the project itself. One other thing I'd like to add is, going back to the quality aspect of this educational facility, it goes all the way down to the play equipment. It's made by Little Tykes. It's custom-made for this, this school. And just down to everything like that, they make sure that the children are safe. There are fall zones for any of the play structures. There's artificial turf that actually adds extra cushion for the students when they are playing on there, as well as sunshades over them, so that they don't get sunburned, even though we don't see the sun for very long right now. Any questions that you might have, I'd be happy to answer.
Before we do the discussion, we have, it's a public hearing. We have a public comment. I'd like to open the public comment. If anybody is here to speak on this, feel free to come on up. Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it to the board. Does the board have any questions for Andrea or?
Yeah, I had a question. Mr. Egan, so you're developing the property and leasing it to, I assume it would be a franchisee?
Correct.
So do you maintain development rights to the southern part of the parcel?
We're presenting this as a single parcel. I understand that there is space in that southern area. You know, it's, it's kind of up in the air whether it's even developable. But we are basically providing this as a single-site development.
So at this time, there's no plan to develop that, or we would have to take into account dual usage, parking, all that kind of stuff?
Correct, correct.
All right, that was, that was my question.
I believe that was touched on, too, where that's actually built into your site plan review, that nothing that comes there could push them out of, into nonconformity.
Correct.
So anything that, that ended up moving you down, because originally you had split in the original, so they changed their site plan to accommodate?
I, I remember that from the meeting, but I just wanted to make sure.
Put it on record. Anyone else have questions?
Getting back to the Planning Commission, which I'm sure you recall, there was a lot of discussion about a generator. There were several people on the Planning Commission that had a concern about the facility not having a generator because of that particular part of the township does lose power frequently. And there was concern that having young children there, not potentially being in a position not having heat, air conditioning. So, and you said you were going to take that back to the, to your client and discuss it with them.
I did. And this may be a disappointment to the, to the, the board, but they have chosen not to pursue having a, a whole-building generator. In addition to that, I did not designate a spot for the generator, because that would have made for another variance that we would request from the ZBA, and I didn't want to muddy the waters. However, with that said, if any time in the future, they were to find it necessary and find a need for that, they don't have a generator in any location that they have across the country.
I understand.
If they do find that they have a need for that, I think an ideal place would be on that north property line next to the transformer. That's where all the electrical comes into the property. I, as I said, I didn't want to put it on the ZBA as a potential location, because it would have muddied the waters a little bit in regards to creating another variance for us to seek. But I think that would be the logical place if they ever chose to pursue that in the future.
No, I agree. That's the ideal spot for a generator, or at least having the infrastructure set up for a generator. And I'm disappointed that at the very least, there wasn't the foresight to at least have the generator infrastructure placed there, even if it had been inconvenient to, on the ZBA. And so that's, that's my thoughts on it. And so that's, that's my thoughts on it.
So I have the same question as Michael, you know, what was going to happen with that vacant piece of parcel? You've answered that. And I was going to ask for clarification on the transformer. Was that going to, was that electrical area going to include a generator? And to tag on to what Neil just said, so I'm a new grandma and I have twins that go to a daycare, not local, unfortunately. And just last week, they're in Boston, like Michigan, it's cold. And just last week, their heat went out and they had to close the daycare. Now furnace is different, generator's not going to make the furnace run, but lived in Michigan my whole life, and even a partial generator, we don't have a whole house generator, but we have personally, we have a smaller generator. It can run furnaces, refrigerators, not air conditioning, not major appliances. But to spare your food, keep people warm, keep some lights on. And, you know, it's a huge facility, it's a lot of little children. I totally agree that at least a partial generator makes a ton of sense, especially you're doing new construction. This would be an easier time to do it than to add it later. You know, seeing what my, my family goes through and how they rely on that daycare and how daycares have to close sometimes because last year it was furnace, but one time it was power, you know, power's going to take the furnace out too. So we live in a cold climate and, you know, heat might be uncomfortable, but when it's too cold, you can't do that with little children, especially, you know, infants. So I, I am disappointed that there's no generator plan as well. Otherwise, I like, I like the plan.
Thank you.
Any more?
Yeah, what is the total occupancy of this building?
It's going to be roughly 202 students and 27 staff.
Oh, he's got his calculator out.
Is it the maximum occupancy or is that the expected occupancy?
That is the expected occupancy.
Do we have, do we know what the maximum occupancy is? I didn't see in the memo.
In terms of occupancy, I mean, that's all reviewed under our fire marshal and building code requirements. So I'm not familiar with the occupancy. I can tell you what, in terms of how we determine the usage with parking, and this does come in compliance with that in terms of use.
Those have been the numbers that were given to the fire department, was 202 and 27?
Yes, yes.
I don't know.
Okay, so Andrea, just to confirm, it's 100 square feet per child based on our zoning, correct?
A play area.
Play area. The play area is 9,400 square feet.
Correct.
202 children times 100 square feet, I'm getting 20,000. Am I wrong in my calculations?
Do they not go on the playground all at the same time as a school person?
No, they don't. They go by, there's one group that goes on the play area at a time.
But based on our ordinance, it says that if it's 100 per child and there's 202 children, I would expect 20,200 square feet of play area.
Well, why would it be 200 children because you're going to have staff and you're going to have other?
He said 27 staff and 202 kids.
Oh, okay. And staff is always a percentage of children, that's a, that's a law.
Wouldn't you include the internal area as well?
That might be the only way the calculation will, I don't know if the ordinance-
You're talking about the 9,000, that's the exterior.
But I thought this was the-
But that was part of her presentation.
But the inside, and the internal, I would assume count because it's all play area.
I guess we'll have to-
No, those are classrooms.
That's, I mean, the requirement is there should be provided and maintained for each childcare for a minimum of at least 100 square feet of outdoor play area. So that would be, you're correct.
And you want to come up and add anything?
I'll just take a look at the language while you want to continue your discussion for a minute.
Any questions while she catches on that one? One thing with the generators, the only thing I will say is that we don't typically require that. I know on my home, I'm building it in just in case, because like you said, it's good to do it while you're new, but even in our buildings, they're not all protected by generator.
Right, but I thought the point was-
It's not really relevant.
Yeah, but I agree, like that's why I've added it to mine.
I will state also that this facility will have to go through the state of Michigan licensing to make sure that everything is, is up to code and safety for the children and the occupants. The other part of it is if there ever was a power outage in regards to lighting, things like that, there is battery-powered backup lighting that will light up the entire interior of, of the building.
That's not my concern.
I think they're worried about the heat.
It's the heat and the air conditioning, and you know that.
Yes.
Well, the heat, I, I agree, I don't know, not seeing the busy building physically, but light could be also important. I worked in schools for 20 years and when the power would go out, sometimes rooms don't have daylight. And so sometimes the schools were closed, sometimes depending on heat, air conditioning time of year, how dark it was, sometimes they would close with a power outage. I mean, ultimately, it's in the best interest of the business to keep their clients happy, the parents, if every day the power's going out, they have to pick up their kids.
They're going to add it.
They're going to take their kids out of there and they're not going to have a business. So, you know, they have 400 plus of these daycares and I'm sure they'll accommodate whatever they need to do.
Any other questions? If not?
Yes, we have a response to that question. The response is that that would be intended that, that would be for the outdoor at each, at each given time, that there could be no more than. So if the board wanted so much as stipulate that there could be no more than 94 children at one time outside, then that would meet the qualifier of the 9402 square feet, as long as they met that requirement, then they would at no time have more than a kid outside with less than 100 square feet each.
You would have like an outdoor occupancy.
Yeah, which, from what I'm hearing, there's how many different playgrounds? There's four different playgrounds and they all go out at different times, so that should not be a problem for them to be able to handle, to meet that. Do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I, I don't think that that would be a problem and, and especially the 94 number is, is probably pretty high as far as the number of children that would ever be on that play area at the same time. My guess is it would probably be around 50 or 60 at the most.
But you, you did indicate that there'd be different playgrounds for different ages. Like when I worked in elementary, you know, where we had the, we had huge property at the one, not all of them, but there was the, you know, like the kindergarten playground and then there was the middle grade playground. And then the back, where there was more space for more active sports, was the upper fourth and fifth kind of playground. And at lunch, they do all go out at the same time, not necessarily in your situation.
Right.
But if it's different ages, you're not going to put the two-year-olds out in the five-year-old's playground. But if they came out at the same time, yeah, it's, it's just-
It'd have to be less than 94.
Right. And then that would provide for the 100 square foot requirement per child.
Did anyone say how?
Just because this was Chris's question, he hasn't had a chance to follow up. Do you want to follow up with anything?
So I, I understand in most daycares, they'll have an area for different age groups. And again, our calculation based on what we're saying, we don't even know that. So we don't know the age group between six months and two years.
Yeah, we do. I can break that down.
Because that would be the calculation that could be, and I don't know if we're going to enforce this. I understand we're doing this at the building and planning level, which is what we do. I don't think our ordinance guy is going to go by and count the number of kids that say they're out of compliance or the fire marshal's saying. The ordinance was placed for a reason, so, and the lot has the space. So that is my only, again.
You have a beautiful southern area that could be turned into a playground.
It's just based on the information we have. So I, I have trouble with that now.
My question was going to be, do we know the age groups? Because I don't see that.
Six months to six years.
Six months to six years.
I can go through the players if you'd like, or Mr. Egan.
I don't know, but how many will actually be on the playground? Is that where you're going?
Well, no, my question was that we're calling this a daycare and then Mr. Egan used the word classrooms. So are they classrooms, like they're educating them, or is this a daycare where the kids play between the times they get dropped off and picked up?
Well, some daycares educate.
There is an element of, of education to the, you know, the curriculum. But again, we're talking about children that are six months to six years, so it, you know, it's, it's somewhat limited as far as what they're teaching the children on a daily basis.
Well, that, that's very common though, the, the daycare is affiliated with Boston University that my grandkids go to. And so there's the infant room and that's a limit of how many staff and how many babies can be in there. And then when they get to be a certain age and they get moved to the, like the one-year-old room, and then, I already have a walk now, so they get moved to the toddler room. And there's different teachers, different curriculum. I see them do artwork, it's, they're very, they share a lot what goes on there. But, and they are like classrooms and, and it's really cute to see these little 18-month-olds sit around a little table and do their work. So it is kind of classroom, but it is also daycare, but it's more than babysitting. And, and I'm sure that's what you're, what you're indicating.
And they're teaching three and four-year-olds reading and writing because your expectation is that you show up to kindergarten with that already known. So this is a system that would help.
Sorry, I was-
I just want to follow up on Chris's-
Until you get to the secondary school of your choice. Sorry.
Oh dear.
Chris made a great point with regard to the 100 square feet. And I guess I'm not exactly satisfied with the idea that the use restriction, and we're talking now about whether it's a conforming building and, and site plan. I don't know if we want to consider, you know, tabling the item for consideration.
Would this be something that goes to the ZBA for a variance?
It might, but, but maybe you could tape, you've already held a public hearing, so you could table this to allow the parties to get back together to, to look at that issue.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth looking at.
That would be the motion you suggest.
Certainly, you know, you have the extra space, not that you want to redo your plan at this point, but the parking could be shifted and you could expand, you know, the play area if need be. You do have, fortunately, you have the property and it is kind of a, you know, narrow play area if you're going to have, only half the kids can be out at the time. And I know from education, when it's a nice day and they know it's going to rain at lunchtime, everybody wants to take their kids out and get that recess or get that playtime, especially when it's not a super-structured classroom environment like you would have in an elementary.
Well, let's go ahead and table then. Anybody have a motion for?
I move we table, what is this, item number seven to the next board meeting?
Supported by Clerk Brooks, supported by Trustee Kalinsky, all in favor. All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have approve American Rescue Act Plan Act ARPA expenditure for the new firewalls presented by Director Will Babincheck.
Good evening, everybody.
He just dropped the mic and walked him out.
So tonight, we are, we're asking to use a ARPA expenditure to replace our existing firewalls. Our existing firewalls are currently Palo Alto Networks. They were brought in in 2015. So just want to explain a little bit, we'll be kind of quick here, but, so we kind of recognize firewalls as they keep bad guys out. And these days, much of that has really changed. So firewall is not only to sit on the edge, it really sit inside as well. So they, they're, what they can do is, look, let's say that clerks got a virus. Well, clerks are segmented from Treasury and, and, they got to go through all that. So let's say if they, if something happened there, instead of that virus spreading around or that malware spreading around or ransomware spreading around to all our departments, that firewall is really in communication, whether it's clerks talking to Treasury, Treasury talking to building, or anywhere, anywhere, any kind of path you talk about. So, and one of the requirements where we have for police is the CIGIS requirements, is to keep police completely segmented away from the rest of the township, not only to protect them from viruses and malware and things like that, just the CIGIS data has certain requirements that we have to live up to. Firewalls also protect our, and log our, our web access for each, each user, what kind of categories are we allow our users to go to, vulnerabilities, spyware, kind of anything, anything in between. So, but really when I came down to it years ago, in 2015, I was put, put in task of a vendor to choose. And at that time, coming in, I was a 17-year Cisco consultant, coming in, and at that time, really having, comparing the two, there really wasn't a question where to go to at that point. And we went with Palo Alto. So Palo Alto is a best-in-class, not only firewall, but a security, security company as a whole. They rank very high in all, all rankings in the garden, the gardener card, excuse me, gardener magic quadrant products of the year. They are, they use machine learning, AI, and kind of everything in between. So they're just a very well-respected, separate security company as a whole. We use actually software and, and their firewalls in conjunction, in conjunction with our endpoints and servers as well. Just to give an example, didn't really want to put too many metrics out there, but the last 30 days, these are vulnerabilities that the firewalls have stopped. We're at 755 vulnerabilities, what number, 131 spyware. If we really went into all the metrics, we would be well in the tens of thousands, but we're not going to worry about metrics tonight. Did you want to explain the quote as well? So our vendor is a Marinette. They do purchase off of the, well, we, we ask them to purchase off of pre-bid contracts. They typically purchase off of GSA. In this case, they're actually, they're actually much lower than our pre-bid contract is, at a point of $18,000, $18,236.60 lower than if we were to buy directly off that pre-bid contract. So if we, if we look here, just want to explain the quote a little bit, everything is, is quantity of one, but you'll see everything's repeated. So our firewall sit in a high availability, so if one fails, the other one picks up right where, where the, the left off, and actually people wouldn't really even notice. So everything, everything really in that case, it gets doubled. So you have, you have to pay two subscriptions, two pieces of hardware, things like that. So just wanted to make that, make that clear. So we are asking for $65,529 for replacement of that hardware and a three-year subscription to their module security services. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer, as long as they are not too security-specific.
Any questions?
Motion, unless there's questions. A motion that we approve the request as presented.
Motion by Trustee Barnett. Supported by Trustee Faki, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have approve the budget amendments for the additional defined benefit plan contribution presented by Director Tice.
Last week we had the budget study session, so this is kind of carrying on from that. So we're asking for the budget amendment based on those discussions to, for $2 million additional contribution towards a defined benefit pension plan liability. Memo was in your packet showing the breakdown of how that gets split out. Most of the areas that are effective do need a budget amendment. There are only a couple that do not. And so I'll take any questions you have on that.
Want to have any questions for Jason? If not.
So obviously we had talked and kind of the board went back and forth about we wanted to put some of that extra money. It's a great problem to have. This is good stewardship on your part to get us here in terms of being fiscally conservative and this board to be able to have extra money. We're very lucky to be in this position. But it'd come up about either we go OPEB or if we want to put extra money towards the ADC. Why in your professional opinion would you want to put more money into the, the capital improvements fund versus ADC when the ADC reduces our required rates as we go forward?
I think that's the next item.
Oh, sorry. Thanks, Jason.
Okay.
No question.
All right. Sorry. On that specific one.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh wait, are you asking to put more into the DB? I thought you-
Yes, but that's the next-
Why'd you take your question?
Well, no, I'm sorry, I thought-
No, he wanted, you wanted to put more into DB.
Correct, but when we talked about it on the budget meeting, we originally said, when he presented it, it was $2 million for the DB.
Yeah.
And then it was $5 million to go to the capital improvements fund. And then we had, at the board, different people came up with different solutions. Again, at one time, mine was an amendment to do it to $3 million. There were people that said, still keep it at $2 million and do $4.5 million and $500,000 OPEB, which I believe was Mr. Barnett, as well as I think you were in support of that at the time. So again, I'm still asking, in your opinion, why would we rather not go up in a higher amount than $2 million and go with the original plan?
Sorry. This is a good question.
I thought you just told him to stop.
I thought he was talking about, okay, it's okay.
So based on that, please.
We have to change seats for you guys.
So one- So one, one issue with the two million for the ADC, if you were wanting to go more is we do have to get the library approval, buy in, if you will, of whether they can afford. So before coming to the study session last week, I talked to the library director and they they were they were okay with if we did our two million, they'd be able to afford their portion of that. So it's, I guess, one downside is if you had wanted to do five and they said, no, we can't afford it, that we can't make the contribution. Okay. So that's that's one caveat to the ADC of the defined benefit plan. And I think I guess my comment on DB versus or DB pension plan versus OPEB versus the equipment fund. The defined benefit ADC and the equipment fund are almost the same in that they have basically the same benefits of protecting and reducing future budgets. And the OPEB doesn't have that. You're you're paying towards your liability still. You're going to get to your potentially to your funded status quicker, but you're not going to reduce or relieve any future pressures on your future budgets going to the equip or going to the OPEB contribution.
So I did not know the library portion, so that makes sense. Obviously, we have partners that we're working with and we make these different decisions. They can affect them either positively or negatively. So making sure we know what their abilities are before we make the decision is important. The capital improvements at times of these boards have had to put off capital improvement expenditures because we just didn't have the money, right? At those times, we had to put off purchases, put off trucks, put off whatever because of that. We don't get to put off ADC contributions. We are required by law to pay them. So whether we have to make cuts in future years, those are required. The capital improvements where it's nice to be able to spend the money and have it, that is not a requirement. There are certain requirements we have to do. That is why I'm a big proponent of putting more into ADC, but the library is a very fair point. I appreciate you bringing that to me, thank you.
Do you, did they seem like this was pushing too much on them?
It is the second time because we did the two and a half before and now another two, so they're a smaller entity, smaller budget.
And we can't front them the money, right?
No. And I'll just say to your last comment, Chris, the when you have those higher future years of the ADC. Yeah, we have to make it, but in a way, if you have to steal from capital in order to make that, then you can.
We don't like term steal. If you use the money you put aside for those times.
Continue to budget appropriately under your tutelage, how about that? But no, I understand.
That's why we created.
It was about the fact that I know that we have to make ADC contributions. We don't necessarily have to make capital improvements and keeping those future payments down for not only hopefully this board, but future boards to be able to have more options when they get to those points. That's what I wanted to do.
Understood.
So I I agree, I mean, in concept, the flexibility is critical over the next five years, you know, roughly. And I mean, for that reason, I would, you know, the two million in DB, yes, and the capital improvement fund for all the rest. I don't think it's best to put it in OPEB anymore. We've already put five hundred more than we're required to add another five hundred. You know, certainly not a bad idea, but I think it's a better idea to have it in a flexible spot like the capital improvement fund.
Do you guys want to address that though when we're on that line item because we're on the DB right now?
Sure.
Okay, unless you're looking to take it away from the DB, but.
No, no.
Okay.
Not me.
I'll make a motion because we don't know if we can have the library add more, that we would make the additional contribution of the two million dollars.
Support. By Trustee Kalinsky, support by Trustee Barnett, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next, we go on to discussion of the budget amendment for transfer to the equipment and replacement fund.
So I'll start where clerk.
Can we can we start with Jason?
Okay, sure.
A little chaos here tonight.
Is it a full moon?
I don't have much, much to say, it's same thing, we discuss, the board had discussions on it. So again, this would be just the amendment portion of the budget amendment to allow the ability to do the transfers out. If you recall in prior years, I'll then have to come back to actually get the approval for the actual transfer and committal of those funds in the equipment and replacement fund. That'll be in in two or three months from now. But this will allow us to be in compliance with the Budget Act. So I mean, I am asking for more just because we've learned in the in the past that something happens, healthcare comes in better or the the court gives us more money of our share than we expected. So I don't expect to do five million, but that gives us the the wiggle room and flexibility for that.
Well, we we did discuss last week putting an additional five hundred thousand into the OPEB, which would take us from one point seven five to two point two five. Is that something that you're not recommending at this point?
It's in the memo.
I thought it was.
It is, yeah, it that's the only thing, it's not its own item because I don't need a, there's no budget amendment being required to be able to do that. But at this.
Well, there was just a discussion. Say there's five point five million, he can go up to five in the in that and five hundred. As it stood right now, if there's five, as it stands right now, the five hundred would go into OPEB and the four and a half would go in.
Right, and that's what we had talked about, but then there was just some other discussion about the extra five hundred thousand. And I know we already had a extra five hundred thousand, but last week we talked about an additional five hundred thousand. So I just wanted to clarify that, that that was still the plan, thank you.
Well, wait a minute, no, 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 that's not so. No, we had talked about up to a million and we came down to five hundred thousand. That's what's being talked about, but if that goes away, that means that goes away. There's not two versions of five hundred. So I just want to make sure it sounded like you thought there were two buckets of five hundred that we're talking about.
That's what I thought we had talked about last week was taking it from one point seven five to two point two five, but.
Well, that would be if right now passes, but but it looks like there's some discussion, so I just want to make sure you knew that we're that that is what someone to talk about is not putting in that five hundred.
Right, that's why I brought it up, I just want a clarification.
Okay.
Yes, so I want to clarify now that I agree with what Clerk Brooks said when we were discussing item nine, which is so at the study session, I was in favor of putting the five hundred thousand into the OPEB. But the statements that Treasurer Showstack so eloquently made at the end of that meeting really stuck in my mind. And I am now of the opinion that that five hundred thousand, instead of going into OPEB, should go into the equipment and replacement fund. And so that would be what my vote would be for.
And I'm still obviously in favor of OPEB because going through twenty nineteen, when that affects your entire budget more than anything. When they make changes, that was tough to go through and I would never want to go through that again. So whenever we have anything extra, I mean, obviously, I'm supportive of the capital improvement fund. I made Jason invent it, so that's that's something I hope future boards continue to put into. But just like you pointed out, a previous board thought of OPEB, I would, I think they assume that we would continue to put into that too. So I just wouldn't want to drop.
As I said at the last meeting, I'm in agreement with you.
Yeah, I I'm I'm big on, you know, paying down debt, paying things off early. I am in favor of the extra five hundred thousand to OPEB. Just because that's a requirement, that's something the sooner we pay it down, the better. And the equipment and replacement fund is good and obviously the majority will still go there. But the OPEB is a very important debt and, you know, the previous board had a lot of angst over the fact that they were not doing their due diligence and we have the money.
Not true.
Well, I was.
It was the rules changed, the rules can change on a on a drop of a dime. And based on the way they were doing it, it changed so quickly that we had to go through a really rough time that I never want to deal with again.
Additional to the OPEB would be my my choice.
Chris and Michael, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just clarify a couple of things. So our requirement under the corrective action plan is for one point two five million that we're going to put into the OPEB trust this year. We already budgeted five hundred thousand on top of that for a total of one point seven five prior to this conversation. So the conversation that we're talking about now is whether we put an additional five hundred thousand into it to make it two point two five million for the year. And my my argument last time was that this year and last year were truly aberrations because property taxes, you know, taxable values went up by five percent because they were limited by the less by the lesser of inflation or five percent. Inflation was higher than five percent, so went up five percent. While we only had two and a half percent rate increase or compensation increases across the board for the staff last year and two point seven five percent this year. But we took five percent higher in revenue, so it made the budgeting a lot easier. And we were able to spread money around and do all sorts of different things that everybody wants to do, which is great. But what happens next year when property values are only going to go up by about three percent and we're going to have at least two point seven five percent compensation, which is just for the contracts that we know about, not to mention years after that, where we don't know where the compensation discussion is going to go when we have to renew the contracts. And so I just think having the five hundred thousand that goes into the equipment replacement fund, which we can then use dollar for dollar in future years is just, I think that flexibility is what we should have. And look, I'm certainly not suggesting that we're not going to pay OPEB. We have the liability to pay OPEB whether we fund it or not, but we're already funding it this year at one point seven five million. So it's certainly not like it's being forgotten, you know, we're already paying, we're already paying more than the minimum. So that's 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 the point I was trying to make at the study session and what I would add.
I agree with Treasurer Showstack, you know, it's the well, well, the the defined benefit plan, I like the two million dollars, I think the rest should go to the capital improvement fund. We are already over, you know, increasing our payment this year to the retiree medical and it doesn't save us any money next year. We don't get credit for it next year, it's discredited at the end, which is decades away. So it's a good problem to have, good planning, everybody, thank you. And that's where I would I would vote to do that. Authorize the amendment to the budget and then further indicate that the two million would be the DB and whatever remains to the capital improvement fund subject to some amount retained to the general fund, a very small amount. Whatever, what was the number you wanted to the general fund?
That's not specified.
Yeah, okay. But. That's the last place to put it.
Yes, yeah, we make sure we have enough, we only basically, in short, we make sure that there's enough to cover in case where during our audit in the summer, they they come up with some adjustment they want to make that it doesn't throw us into a negative.
Which hasn't happened.
Has not happened.
And again, that fund balance in the general fund is within that investment policy that you've been maintaining for years.
Yes.
So.
Under this, yeah, we we had that just under this administration, right? A lot of these policies were, they were written under this group here.
Well, you know, I agree with what you said, Michael, and yeah, we're we're in a strong position financially and it may not be as strong, I agree with you in the coming years, but although we've we funded beyond what the requirements are, I still think it's important that while we have the money, we take advantage of that opportunity to continue to fund even further, whether we get credit or not, we are getting credit in the perception of the community that we're paying down our liabilities. They've complained about it a long time, understandably so, when the when the law changed from the state and we started funding it and we're continuing to fund it. And I think while we have the money, it's important to show that we're doing whatever we can to pay down that liability. So I'm in agreement with Danny and and Val about that.
And this one, the, just to reiterate, there's three reasons why I'm always for it. One is rating agencies, when you sit through those meetings and they continually, they don't ask about the capital equipment fund, they don't ask about pension, but boy, do they slam us on SADs and OPEB. So that's the first one, I'd like to stop hearing that as much as possible and get back on both to AAA. The other one is the community, absolutely, we always promised that when we had extra, we'd put it in there. And then the third that I think is the also very important is retention of employees as well as attracting employees. That cap, the capital or sorry, the corrective action plan limits what we can offer. That limits the negotiations, that limits quite a few things that other communities who are not under this plan can do. And the quicker we can get out from that, the quicker we can retain and attract employees in a competitive marketplace. So for me, that is somewhere that you always should focus so that you also treat your employees with the the fact that they know that you're investing in their future too. So personally, those are my three, three reasons to to vote for it.
One thing, one thing I'll add, sorry to stop you, I didn't mean to cut you off there, but by putting the money into the equipment replacement fund, we can use that money for equipment next year, the year after, whatever. That will free up additional funds that at that point, if we have no other need for it, we could put into OPEB. So putting the money into the equipment fund is all about flexibility and giving us the option to be able to do things down the line.
Except if we're not doing it now, odds are down the line, they'll also say, wait, we're doing our minimum on OPEB, which is kind of what got people into this in the first place, paying that minimum like it wasn't wrong, it was just the way they did it. If we don't do it now, what would make me assume that in the future, they wouldn't do the same thing of pension and and equipment and not OPEB?
We have a capital, we, I mean, we have a corrective action plan that we have to follow.
No, I'm saying putting an extra, I'm saying putting an extra.
We are putting an extra, but.
But not when it gets.
Didn't want to compare this decision to any past decisions about not funding or or funding as they went, which is a different legal framework than today. You know, we are over funding in excess of the correction action plan this year, I think last year or two. It it doesn't help us in the short term. If I recall from the funding agencies, the rating agencies, I mean, their their main concern is the is the SADS, not so much.
And the structural deficit.
This is in there, but the SADS, that's, the SADS are a big, big part of that, and that doesn't seem to be something we're going to change as a board. And five hundred K, you know, it could be an important flexibility factor in a lot of different areas over the next five years. But it wouldn't make a big difference with regard to when we finish the corrective action plan or what the rating agencies will say. So I, by the way, these are both good decisions, you know, both good choices, it's sort of like the ZBA problem earlier. You know, there's not one, there is, I don't think that what you're advocating is wrong, I just have a different opinion and that and that's all. And so it's a good logical thing.
It's probably a little more personal since we went through that, being on the board and going through it. It's it's definitely something I wish that never goes on in the future, but it wasn't anything else that caused that other than OPEB.
Well, and the way I look at it is we've had a couple of good years, we've been putting many million dollars, millions of dollars into that equipment and replacement fund. And while I think that's a good thing, we've also just had the four million dollars of ARPA, we've had some really flush couple of years. We've been buying more police cars and emergency vehicles and we've been updating our, you know, our security. And we've been doing so much investment that to put all of that, I'm not saying to not put what the four, four and a half million, depending what Jason's final number is. It's only another five hundred thousand and, you know, the OPEB is is a huge liability. And the sooner we can keep getting that percentage up, not only is it good for perception, it's good for debt. We're still putting millions more into that equipment and replacement fund. And I think from the perception of, well, we can spend that on a lot of things, well, yeah, but we have this liability. And I think another five hundred thousand still put the rest in the equipment and replacement is not that much, but it's significant, it sends a message. It addresses our liabilities and personally, you know, I'm not saying like put it all or put half, I'm just saying another five hundred thousand, I just think is very prudent. Because we've had good years and we've had abilities to put a lot more money aside and we've had other monies, the ARPA, to do a lot of investments. I just don't think that we, it's not like we don't have any reserves and like we've expecting some major thing. I think it's more important to pay down the debt for our employees, for the public that was important. I just feel strongly about, you know, I'd like to see that five hundred thousand go into OPEB.
And additionally, I think a lot of people mentioned the investments in the healthcare, but we also had an influx from the new village for public safety. There was a an increase in public safety by millions and we weren't able to spend on hiring people because there aren't enough police officers out there. So when you think about who's in that OPEB, public safety is the largest group. So we wouldn't have a lot of this money if it wasn't for public safety. So I see this as a direct response to that as well. We're investing in all the departments with pension, all the departments with cable, but this is another way to say thank you to those who we haven't been able to fill with those spots to make a little bit more of a work life balance of we're still investing it in you through the OPEB. We would not have about three mil, about three. the OPEB. We would not have about three mil, about 3 million extra from that public millage? Was it 2. something?
Yeah, yes.
So I personally see, when we see this extra here, a lot of that has to do with public safety, which is the crux of our OPEB.
Well, and we might not have all these surpluses with the changes in the investments and different things next year.
Also the crux of our capital.
So it'd be even harder to say, put the money into, put the additional.
I mean, I would also just say, you know, with the capital improvements, obviously it's also, you know, we're seeing upgrades in the facilities for our public safety. So I know obviously they benefit in that respect. The last thing I'll add is, you know, originally I was in favor of putting into OPEB. When I was running for trustee in 2020, I was dismayed as a resident, you know, for nearly my whole life to know that the township had such large liabilities. The fact of the matter is the township wasn't the only one in that position. Governor Snyder put the standard. Now we have the corrective plan. The reason why I'm changing my position, and I think that, this is the point I want to stress maybe before I make a motion, is the flexibility. So I think that was the point that really stuck with me after Treasurer Showstack brought this up at the end of the meeting last, at the study session. And ultimately, what concerns me is that, you know, to Clerk Brooks' point, we can't really make a wrong decision now, but it's because we have all of the money. So what I'm concerned about is in the future, when the markets are not as good, when property taxes are not as high, when we have increased liability for wages and, you know, everything else, I think it's important to be able to have that flexibility. And if we're lucky enough to have the additional money, we'll put it towards the OPEB. I was always in favor of, you know, I said, okay, well, you can fund it at 40% and be within state law. I said, well, we should be funded at 100% as Bloomfield Township. The truth is that it took decades to get us into that position that we were in. It's going to take decades to get us out. Bloomfield Township pays its bills. It's going to pay its OPEB. It's going to pay its pension. And I think it's important that we as a board, keep that flexibility for the tough times that may be coming ahead. And we're already investing the additional 500 million above our corrective action plan. So unless anybody else has anything to add, I'll make.
Just a reminder, there were not that many as low as us. I think the city of Inkster and us were tied for the bottom. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't generalize that a lot of people were in that situation.
And, and, and look, I, I don't want to minimize it because candidly, for me, that was one of my, you know, major red flags of saying, you know, what's going on in the township as a resident. It was very concerning to me. But we've got the corrective action plan in place. We've been following it. We're going above that plan, which will get us to the 40% sooner and also to be, you know, fully funded sooner. And I think it would be wise of us to keep that flexibility in place with the understanding that, you know, capital improvements, while sometimes you think, oh, it's no big deal, sometimes there are things that we're providing services to our residents and those services depend on a lot of times capital improvements. So with all of that, I will say that I will move to, well, I don't know. I guess.
You can make them up. We don't have to be unanimous all the time.
What I was going to say is I just wanted to, just, I want to make sure that I phrase this correctly for Jason. So ultimately, what I'd like to do is whatever's left over, instead of putting it into OPEB, put it into the equipment and replacement fund.
Up to, up to 5 million, Jason?
Yeah, okay, up to 5 million.
Yep.
They have the motion made.
Up, up to 5 million.
So she's saying, don't put any OPEB in of that. Just up to 5 million.
And keep the OPEB contribution at what was budgeted for the year.
Yeah, no additional extra. Yep. So we have, no, of what we're talking about now.
Okay, 1.75 already has a half million.
But it's less than the 2 million that we were actually originally doing. So just a reminder, for those that weren't on here, and Michael, you mentioned it, we actually were required to do 2 million. When times got tough, Jason and I went and asked because what I inherited was not a pleasant budget season. So again.
We inherited.
Right, but, but I create the budget. So that was an eight-month process that I, it's kind of like me saying, I run elections. We each do different things. So I go through an eight-month process and we went to the board, the Michigan Sustainability Board, and asked for a reduction because we couldn't keep up with the 2 million that was promised. So just a reminder, we are not doing what was already promised. We were trying to get back to it. So, but we do have a motion, just to, just some, add some coloring of what, what actually we are and aren't doing. So yes, we're putting an extra to try and get closer to that 2 million that we promised when we first got through the cap. But we have a motion by trustee Ficki. Do we have a second?
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Do you want to roll call?
Oh, okay, sure.
Yeah, I was not going to ask.
Trustee Ficki?
Yes.
Trustee Kalinsky?
Yes.
Treasurer Showstack?
Yes.
Trustee Barnett?
No.
Trustee Murray?
No, especially in light of what.
Wait, no, don't add, don't add.
Okay.
Clerk is yes.
And I'm a no.
That's, pass as 4 to 3.
4 to 3, yep. All right. So we'll go on to the next one.
Thanks, Jason.
We have, thank you, Jason. Next, we have considered the award of the Lakewood Road Water Main Replacement Contract. We have Director Coriolus.
Hi there.
Hello.
I'm here to present tonight the contract award for the 2024 Lakewood Road Water Main Project. Lakewood is just under a half mile stretch of road between, oh, where are they? My goodness, it's late. Just north of Corton between Franklin and Wing Lake. I'm sorry. The, you can see there in the blue, that's the existing water main location. The Lakewood, the existing water main history is it's an existing eight-inch diameter cast iron water main between Franklin and Wing Lake. It was installed in the late 1950s and currently serves 18 homes. The water main consists of approximately 2,400, 2,400 feet of underground pipe, gate valves and hydrants. Due to the main break frequency on that stretch of water main, the age of the pipe, the location was identified to replacement in 2022 and added to the five-year asset management plan that was submitted to Eagle last year. The scope work for this project consists of the replacement of 2,000, 2,400 feet of existing water main via pipe bursting, and that's the majority of the project. There'll be some directional drilling and a small piece of open cut. The removal and replacement of four new hydrants, the replacement of five gate valve and wells for more reliable water system operation, the reconnection of existing 18 water services, water service lines to the new main, and then performance of any pavement and surface restoration. The pre-chlorinated pipe bursting construction method consists of minimal, or provides minimal surface disruption during construction, approximately 300, 500 foot, feet of pipe replacement per day. Residents adjacent to the day's work area will be without water for approximately eight to 12 hours. And then we'll make the, once we make the tie-ins, we'll connect those services to the new main, what's, after it's flushed. There'll be minimal additional water shut-offs for the system operation through this project as well. Five bids were received for this project on January 30th. DeAngelo Brothers was the low bidder at a total bid amount of $524,658. DeAngelo has a long history in the township and is currently the emergency contractor. HRC and ESD are confident that DeAngelo Brothers is capable of meeting all performance expectations for this project. And with that, staff's recommendation is to award the Lakewood Road Water Main Replacement Project to DeAngelo Brothers in the amount of $524,658. Should quantities needed to complete this project or conditions discovered in the field increase the contract cost above 10%, the ESD shall obtain approval by the township supervisor prior to issuing approval of said contract amount. In addition, should the quantities needed to complete the project or conditions discovered in the field increase the contract cost above 30%, ESD shall obtain approval from the Board of Trustees prior to issuing approval of said contract amount. With that, I'll invite any questions.
Any questions?
When is this work supposed to commence?
We're expecting spring, summer.
Any other questions?
Make a motion that we approve of, as recommended by Cory, the language that was presented. And I know, as you stated, we've had a long history with the DeAngelo Brothers and certainly confident that we're able to do the job on this.
Motion by trustee Barnett?
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass. Next, we also have considered the award of the 2023 Jan Ron Sully Safety Path Retaining Wall Repair Program. Again, Director Coriolus.
Thank you. The, the scope of this work, I mean, annually, ESD and staff, as part of the Jan Ron Sully Safety Path Program, we, we install new safety path construction. We plan for it, budget for it, and then bid for it. The safety path maintenance is generally done in-house, the cleaning and clearing of vegetation with DPW. We have a safety path repair program, the retaining wall repair program, and the ADA compliance program, all part of the retaining, or the Jan Ron Sully Safety Path. Specific to the 2023 retaining wall and fence repair program, there are 13 locations throughout the township, seven existing segments of block retaining walls to be reconstructed, repaired or removed, six locations of existing split rail fences to be replaced with commercial-grade aluminum fencing. And then their site work varies and includes clearing, removal of existing walls, regrading, sidewalk removal and replacement, and reconstruction of existing segmental block retaining walls, drainage improvements, landscape and associated restoration. Again, there's several throughout the township. There's nothing specific. It's hard to see there, but there are shaded areas throughout the township that we have identified for replacement, retaining wall repair, replacement or removal. Here's an example of, of a location that's been damaged. This is just right near the entrance to the, or exit to the courthouse. This was hit by a vehicle in a, in a traffic crash. I think this was last year or the year before. Again, just some general repair that's needed on this wall. And again, just some general damage. You could consider a retaining wall part of the asset, just like anything else. It's needed to function or the functionality of, of a lot of the safety path throughout the township. A total of three bids were received on January 31. Talia Construction Incorporated, ICI, from Washington Township, was the low bid in the amount of $761,641.22. ICI was the contractor for the, or is the contractor, was the contractor for the 21, 2021, 2022, and 23 safety path projects, as well as the 23 safety path repair project and the ADA ramp improvement project. So we're very familiar with ICI in the, in the township. Recommendation, staff moves to approve the bid, or we recommend a move to approve the bid award, the contract, I'm sorry, and award the contract for the 2023 Safety Path Retaining Wall and Fence Repair Program to Talia Construction, Inc., from Washington Township in not to exceed amount of $761,641.22, except that the Township Engineering and Environmental Service Department shall have the authority to approve up to 10% increase of said contract amount based on the actual quantities needed to complete the project or conditions discovered in the field. If said conditions and or quantities are confirmed by the township, ESD and the township consulting engineers. Should those quantities needed to complete the project or conditions discovered in the field increase the contract cost above 10%, ESD shall obtain approval from the township supervisor prior to issuing approval of said contract amount.
You cut it out. You're the one that writes them that long. You only have yourself to blame.
We intend to be thorough.
Does anyone have a question?
I do. So, yeah, the retaining wall in front of the courthouse, I've noticed for a long time. So question one, is a traffic accident like that, do we seek to get any kind of reimbursement for anybody who's at fault if they're insured?
Yes. Yeah, I think we did. And I, I don't have to, want to defer to Angela on this. There was something, we, we did do some investigation for that specific accident, but it was discovered that the driver who hit the wall was not at fault. So to try to seek $30,000, I think that's what we estimated for that repair, 30,000. There was some concern there that that might be gouging that, that operator of that vehicle when it wasn't there, when they weren't at fault. Does that make sense?
Do we know who was at fault? Was it like a hitman kind of thing?
I'm going off the memory on that, on that.
It happened definitely last year. It wasn't that long ago. It was like car hit that curb and flipped over and hit the wall.
Yeah, but there was something that, that caused the car that was not their fault or their, they were not at fault.
Got cut off.
Again, I'm, I'm going off the memory, if you'd like. Would you like me to research that?
So whether if it's, that's okay. But whether it's that specific incident or other incidents I've talked to Noah about this with the fences on Square Lake with Dave Fane and I put together, thank God, it looked so horrible before. But I don't know if you remember that one. It was Square, I'm, I'm going on. You remember, you remember.
I haven't been here quite a year yet, so.
Really, it seems longer than that.
Square Lake used to be, I can't say it. Anyway, but as I've discussed with Noah in the past, if there are incidents where there's been significant damage, if we can go after the person at fault, I think we should.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree with you. Don't want to gouge somebody, but if they're at fault, I think that we should be trying to get reimbursement. So that's one thing. The other is maybe you're waiting to get this approved and had to do the bids out, but it seems like some of these take a long time to get repaired.
Yeah, there were, and, and this project specifically, there were two easement, temporary easement acquisitions that were required that were very challenging to obtain through that. I'm not, I don't want to make excuses. I think moving forward, we're going to have a different methodology. If, if those are just challenging, then you're, you're going to pull them right from that project to expedite other repairs. We've already identified locations for the next, next project, depending on how this project goes.
Yeah, because that's such, especially in front of the courthouse on Telegraph, that's such a, an obvious sight to get so many people driving past it.
Yep.
And it looks really, looks bad. And I'm glad to see that it's getting repaired soon.
Yeah, some, some of these too, you know, they're, they're very challenging in the scope of the work that's involved in making the repairs. You'll see some of these walls that are starting to lean out towards that. Those, those walls are going to be, and that's why it's such a high dollar amount. They have to be completely redone, taken down, regraded. Support tiebacks are going to be installed to hold them back, some additional grade work. So there's, there's a lot more involved in it than, than simply taking the block out and resetting it. It's, but I think in cases like that, and it's been a, a pet peeve of mine having to see that on a daily basis, especially given that location. So you're absolutely right. I, I think the ESD is going to be a lot more expeditious in, in getting these projects done, especially when they're in such plain view of Town Hall and right up in front and center.
Appreciate it.
To piggyback on what Neil was just saying, I think there's something, I mean, I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't want to, in an accident that wasn't somebody's fault, you know, present a bill to, you know, to a citizen. On the other side of it, I think there are some provisions in like automobile insurance and things that talks about property damages part of it that would, it would be maybe more of an insurance issue.
Okay.
But I think it's worth looking at on a case-by-case basis.
No, I'm in agreement with you as far as, I'm not saying bill the individual, go after the insurance companies.
Sure.
Yeah, that's what they're there for. If they're.
That's what we pay those premiums for.
If somebody's at fault.
Yeah.
Right. Any other questions?
Yes. My colleagues over here, I agree with them that, I don't know if our township has a cost recovery ordinance specifically as it regards to damage, then we should just follow that ordinance. So I don't want to go after people, go after their insurance, but, you know, in the instance, we're talking about $700,000 that all of our residents are paying because of one or two people made an accident. And we never want to go after somebody when, you know, don't kick somebody when they're down, but it's $700,000 that our other residents are putting here versus putting to new safety paths or lights and safety paths or improvements to safety paths. So I want to make sure that we follow that cost recovery ordinance. And unless there is a reason why, we would just follow that to the T.
Sure.
And we've used it in other departments as well, like with the larger fire, open hills. We've used it on other municipalities when they use our services. So we, we are very familiar with our cost recovery because it's, it's amazing how quickly things can be taken advantage of. So, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
And I'll make a motion.
One last question. The last motion had 10%, up to 10% with ESD, over 10% to the supervisor, over 30% to the board. This one doesn't have that over 30. Was there a reason why that was excluded?
We added that for water and sewer because we weren't able to plan it. Remember how someone were coming back 50%? I wasn't comfortable. Originally, it was always anything over 10%. I personally wasn't comfortable making decisions over 30, even water and sewer. This they can plan for. They know exactly how much it's unit, but this isn't water and sewer.
It says anything over 10%, you know, you would have approval to, ability to approve that. It could be, at this point, could be 50 or 80% over.
Well, no, I brought something to you guys that was at 15%. Because again, I think the only one I've signed off on is usually 11%. But yeah, I personally added that 30% for water and sewer.
Yeah, in this motion, you're right. You're absolutely right. It should read up to 10% and that contract cost above 10%.
Right.
In the second bullet. So it should read up to 10%. That's a good.
Right, but you have the 30%. You can't, you can't plan for underground because you don't know what's there till you open it up. And that was consistently going over 10%. So that's when I asked actually Olivia at the time to start adding that into water sewer motions.
Well, and I know Corey, I think they're usually under 10. This is your first year. We see so many of these contracts that always say up to 10% and then addition, in addition to that, it has to come to Danny or the board or whatever. But how often do we hit into that extra 10%? Because I would think with all the projects we have going on, if say 20% of the time we go into that increase, that's going to take out of our budget. So I, like, how unexpected, how common does this occur?
Yeah, it's hard to say.
I can track how many times I've signed it. I personally can think of three in three years that were, one was about 11, one was 10.9%, one was 12%, like, but once one hit 15, I was like, hey, let's go to the board.
So on time and under budget is always our goal.
Yeah, sure.
However, even with the greatest engineered plans, there's sometimes potential to say, you know what, let's include this. We're here. We have the contractor. Let's go. We've got a little bit of flexibility in that. If it makes sense to go above the contract amount as its bid, that's what we consider. It's not just a rule that we're automatically going to go above the 10% valve. That's not our intent at all.
Right, no, because there's unexpected things. Like you said, and like with major sewer projects, if you said, oh, well, that's going to be 11%, stop. There's a cost to that, too. Now, my point was just, this is standard in contracts. But how often do we hit into that? And what's, like, maybe that's an adjacent question. What's the bottom line? Like, how much does that on an annual basis technically, you know?
I don't know.
How much does that impact our bottom line and our budget? How much of that, you know, do we have just readily available?
No, it is, well, it's something we track. We track every project down to the penny, right? Our staff does for all the projects.
Can I suggest, I mean, I have no problem adding up to 30 on all of them. I'm just going to tell you, I'm going to come to you sooner on something that's predictable. So that's what I was saying, like, we can add up to 30%, always come to the board on everything. I'm just going to let you know, I would probably come to the board anyway ahead of that because I'm not comfortable on something predictable. Going as high as 30%, but we can add it if you want.
Proposing is to go as high as 10%, not.
No, he has up to 10%. I have 10% on.
Right, that's correct.
They very rarely go past 10%.
That's not what it says, though.
That's what it says.
That's absolutely what it says.
That's what I'm saying. I don't.
So the other one said, so this is a blank check to go anything, it's zero to 9% with ESD. 10% or however high percent after that goes to the supervisor. It should at some point be capped and come to the board.
That's what Danny was suggesting.
Right, I'm saying you could put 30 on all of them if you want. I'm just going to come to you a lot sooner than 30. Because this should never go up to 30. This is something easily predictable. So you could put 30 on all of them if you want.
But I agree that 30% is a great, is a lottery way that is afforded the supervisor for good reason. For underground projects that need immediate decisions. But from a control standpoint, eventually it should come back to the board. And that, and the addition of that language by Olivia a little while back was a great idea. It helped to alleviate the questions that were out there because some motions used to say would award the bid the amount of XXX. And as we know, they're underground projects, sometimes it was XXX plus 3 or whatever. And this wording clarifies that so that there is authority directly given by the board to spend in excess of the bid amount under certain circumstances.
So I asked for the 30 on the others. I'd like to ask for something lower on these, though. I would ask for 15 or 20 because I don't see any reason why it would ever go up to 30.
Well, it's already saying that Corey's department has up to 10% and then.
But he's saying he's not comfortable with me having past 10%. And I'm saying I'm okay with bringing it to the board. I'm the one who added the 30% in the other. So let's bring it to the board earlier. I'm fine.
But to complete that, so if he has up to 10%, but then, does Danny have an additional 10%?
No, I have ongoing. It's never gone past. So it usually goes 11%, 12%. When something hit 15, I brought it back to the board because it was something I don't feel comfortable with. So I'm saying I'm okay. I'm the one who added the 30% in there because I didn't feel comfortable. So I'm okay adding more restrictions. Just please don't go up to 30. Because it should be much lower at like.
20 would be fine. I don't think.
Nothing ever, I'm almost thinking 15. I've never seen anything go up to 15.
I would like to make a motion to amend the budget item to allow ED, ESD to go up to 10% and then from 10 to 15% be allowed to the supervisor. Anything over 15% would be brought back to the board for a decision of the board.
Support.
I support that. Yes.
So motion by Tracy Kalinsky, support by Tracy Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you.
Thanks, Corey.
Thanks, Chris. Good.
All right. Next, we have considered approval of the variance to the floodplain ordinance for floodway impacts at 1277 Harrow Circle, presented by Adam Poulter.
Good evening.
Hello, Adam.
I am here on behalf of the homeowners of 1277 Harrow Circle to present to you a request to a variance on the township's floodway development ordinance for a riverbank restoration and stabilization project. This proposed project includes placement of three cubic yards of fill and 63 cubic yards of riprap, totaling 66 cubic yards spanning a 95-foot portion of the riverbank. These proposed improvements are to facilitate the restoration and stabilization of a heavily eroded riverbank of the Rouge River. Additionally, there is a tree on this riverbank that is threatening to fall into the river due to this erosion. And for those of you who may not be aware, riprap is a coarse crushed rock that is considered a more natural way to restore and prevent erosion as opposed to crushed concrete or metal fencing. This is an aerial view of the property with the subject improvement area enlarged and highlighted in red. And those small black dots represent the approximate location of the improvements along the northern riverbank. And this is, the plans were reviewed against Section 10-59 of our ordinance and approved by Engineering and Environmental Services. The image shown is a snippet of those approved plans with the proposed improvement highlighted in yellow. The red lines are the floodway boundary and the orange line is the 100-year floodplain boundary. And I'll go more into detail on those boundaries in following slides. These are two pictures that were provided by the applicant with their application. Shown on the left is a wide view of the proposed site. You can see a existing crushed concrete wall there that was put in place on the bank during a previous attempt to preserve the riverbank. And you can kind of see how far that's eroded back since then. On the right is that tree that is threatening to fall into the river. You can see a considerable void that has formed under there where there used to be supporting soil. And should that tree fall into the river, it could cause property damage or obstructions to the river downstream. These, to kind of give you an overall view of the site, this is a snippet from our floodplain and floodway maps here at the township. And these proposed improvements fall into the red and orange category. As well as the green, but the green area does not have restrictions. The red is the floodway, which is the area reserved for the river to carry floodwater flows. The orange is the 100-year floodplain, which is the expected elevation for those floodwaters to rise during a 1% chance storm. And I'll go into the restrictions in following slides. Those areas are regulated by both the Michigan Department of Great Lakes and Energy and the township. And we restrict building within those areas. The requirement for this variance comes from Chapter 10, Article 3 of the township's general ordinance. Specifically, we're looking at Section 10-58, our floodway protection standards. And that dictates that encroachments, including fill, new construction, substantial improvements, and other development in the floodway shall be prohibited. Exceptions to the standard should only be granted through the variance from the township board in accordance with those provisions as outlined in Section 10-59. So since all 66 cubic yards of that proposed improvement falls within the floodway, that's why it's being brought before you here tonight. And to that end, these approved engineering plans were compared to those variance procedures as outlined in Section 10-59. And it's been found that all of those provisions are either met or do not apply. I'd like to go over briefly the approvals that were required, both by the township and outside government entities. From the Michigan Department of Great Lakes and Energy, a Part 31 and 301 permit was, were required, both of which were issued and approved on December 8 of 2022. And then through the township, it was required to go to the Zoning Ward of Appeals for a variance request for the encroachments from the 25-foot natural feature setback. That request was heard on the November 14 meeting and was unanimously approved. And is required to go before the Board of Trustees. It will be granted a variance for the floodway, which is what's being brought before you tonight. And lastly, it requires a joint windland and floodplain permit. And that permit is prepared to be approved pending the board's decision tonight. And then with all that, I would like to request that the board consider granting the variance for this project for associated impacts in the floodway for the purposes of the installation of riprap and fill for riverbank restoration, stabilization, and erosion prevention. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Nice job. That was your first presentation. Do you have any questions for Adam? I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Tracy Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Key. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nice job. One for one. So next we have considering approval of the 48th District Court Rooftop Unit Replacement. This is another Adam. We have Adam Ruse, our Public Works Manager.
Good evening. All right, brief background. The township has several large facilities that require many rooftop units throughout the campus. So this is part of a multi-year plan to.
We'll go over that one.
I like that.
You had the big hit tail.
Anyway, it's part of a multi-year plan to replace these units. Each facility has between three and four of these large rooftop units. For the 48th District Court RT replacement, it was approved as part of the 23-24 budget. And this is a 40-ton rooftop unit located at the 48th District Court. And it's approaching the end of its useful life and is scheduled for replacement as part of the board-approved budget. An RFP for this project was posted on Bidnet Direct, formerly Mitten, and 10 bids were received. And that's part of the memo. At this time, we recommend acceptance of the overall low bid for tech mechanical in the amount of $138,331.
Do they have any questions?
Have we used that contractor before?
Yeah, they've actually done quite a bit of work throughout the township, replaced many of these units.
Unless anybody else has any questions, I'd like to, I'd make a motion.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky.
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
All right.
Next, we have considering approval of the David Payne Public Services Building Rooftop Unit Replacement. Also Adam Ruse.
This is very similar, just smaller in scale. It's only a 10-ton rooftop unit. And it's also approaching the end of its useful life and is scheduled for replacement as part of the budget. An RFP for this project was posted on Bidnet Direct as well, formerly Mitten, and eight bids were received. And at this time, we recommend acceptance of the overall low bid for Eastside Mechanical in the amount of $64,185. And they are also a very viable contractor for this job.
Any questions?
That includes the cost of the unit, right?
Correct. Yep, that's a total cost for replacement, work, unit, everything.
Thank you. Motion will be approved as presented.
Motion trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That passes. Thank you. Thanks for staying so long, you guys. All right. Next, we have considering approval of the general investment policy by Treasurer Michael Shuffet.
Thank you. So the next three items are items that we reviewed at our study session about two weeks ago. So the first one, remember, we talked about we had three different categories of investments that the treasurer's office manages. The first one is what they call general surplus or just excess cash. And so this first policy is for that. And what else? Basically, this resolution conforms to Public Act 20, which is MCL 129.91. And that dictates how so-called surplus funds can be invested. So I would point to Dirk and say he looked at it, but he's not here. So I guess I'll just take my word for it. He'll be back in a minute. But basically, as I said, this policy conforms us to Public Act 20. And if the law were to change, we would automatically change with it because it just references the act. So.
So this was more like a formality that we had to do?
Yeah, well, the policy as it sits today does not conform to the act. So so I was just referencing that Dirk signed off that this general investment policy conforms to Public Act 20, which is MCL 129.91. If the law were to change, the policy would automatically change with it because it conforms, it strictly points to the act and says, if the act says we can do it, we can do it. If the act says we can't do it, we can't do it. And that's that's it. So I'll, we reviewed it briefly at the study session. So if anybody has any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
No, I appreciate bringing it to us. Now, we're always in conforming with it. As they change it, the state level will continue to be able to be abreast in the best way to do things. And unless somebody thinks has anything further, I'd like to make a motion in support of this.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky.
Support.
Support by trustee Marie. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Okay.
This is considering approval of pension trust investment policy.
Thank you. Sorry.
Sorry. He says I have to read him.
I know. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. So this is for the second category of investments that we talked about, which is the pension trust. The law that dictates what we can do with the pension is Public Act 314. And Public Act 314 is MCL 38.1132 at Secuder. And so basically, this says that, you know, it sets certain criteria for the different asset classes that you can hold, how much you can hold of certain asset classes. Now, we're kind of hamstrung a little bit, not because of the law, but because of this contract that Homer Case signed in 1960 about the guaranteed deposit account, part of, and power now used to be prudential. And so the GDA is roughly 60% of our total trust. And we have no control over what it's invested in or what the return is going to be. We just, it's a black box. They simply say, your number for this year is going to be 3%. Your number this year is going to be 2%. Whatever it is, that's what we get. So what we can do, what we do have discretion over are the additional funds that we put into the trust as a result of selling the bonds 10 years ago, can't believe it's been 10 years already, that we've sold those bonds. And so we've invested now, along with all of our other contributions that we've put into the plan, we have about $100 million, which is about 40% of the total pension trust. And so what this policy does is basically says that we can invest according to the law, according to Public Act 314, for all of these discretionary investments, meaning what's not in the GDA. And so we will never run afoul of the limits that are in the law. So for example, if Public Act 314 says that we cannot exceed 70% of equities, okay? Well, 60% of our pension trust is in the GDA, which is a fixed income security. So even if we were to put all of the other money into stock, we'd only be at 40% and not anywhere close to the 70% that's required or that's limited by law. What else? You know, so. What else? You know, so real estate investment trust and other real estate investments can be up to 20%. We currently have 10% of our, what I call discretionary investments in real estate. So that's really 4% of the total trust. And we can go up to 20% of the total trust. And then the last thing, the, the, probably the biggest change in this is that we've added the basket clause, which is clause 20D of the Public Act. And that allows us to put investments, alternative investments into the portfolio. And in the asset class allocation schedule, I put it at 5%. So that's 5% of the 40% that we control, which means that we're really only putting 2% of our total assets into alternative investments. And alternative investments are less liquid, but potentially higher yielding investments like private equity, private debt, venture capital, other limited partnership interest, things like that. So less, less liquid, but you know, ideally, those classes exist because they return a higher yield. And so we're only going to be putting at most 2% of our total trust in that amount, even though we could go up to 20 according to the, to the law. So, and again, this conforms to Public Act 314. So if any amendments were to be made by the legislature in Public Act 314, we would automatically move with it because we just, everything, as you read through it, everything references the MCL or the, or the Public Act. Right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions?
No, with that said, I mean, come a long ways from how originally how vanilla it was as far as with the, the options that you had for the policy. So I'm glad to see that we're compliant and it's making some progress where we have other, other opportunities to make investments and be happy to make the motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next is to consider approval of retired employees' healthcare benefit trust investment, also Michael.
Yes, thank you. So this is for the OPEB trust, our retiree healthcare trust, which it has its own law, Public Act 149 of 1999, which is also MCL 38.1211. And that says that we're allowed to fund a healthcare investment plan to support promises made for retiree healthcare. But they got a little lazy up in Lansing, and rather than recreate the wheel, they basically said, okay, you can do it for healthcare, but for anything related to the investments, look at Public Act 314. And so it references Public Act 314, which we just talked about, which is for pension trusts. And so you'll notice that this policy is virtually the same as the pension one because it both relies on the same law, Public Act 314. The only difference is that because we don't have a GDA-type investment vehicle for the, for the healthcare, we have to be more cognizant of where we put our limits on our, on our securities. So for example, we have the same 70% limit that we could put on stock. So between our large cap, our small cap, and our international, that took us to 70%, right? So I, that, that takes us to the 70%. So we can't go above that, you know, and according to the law. We can't put more than 15% in high-yield securities, high-yield debt securities, for example. We don't have any in high-yield securities right, right now. So, but theoretically, if we were to put some of our fixed income into that, we would have that limit. Real estate would also be 20%. I'm proposing real estate of 10%. And then the basket clause, which allows for the alternative investments, that you can go up to 20%, but I have it limited to 10%. So it's, it's keeping us conformed with the law, with the state law that, that governs these vehicles, but also gives us a little bit more of a conservative bend.
Great. Any questions?
Any questions?
I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next is consider approval of financial institutions for township funds.
Thank you. So according to the general investment policy, which we just ratified, it says that the treasurer shall, shall recommend for the board's approval, financial institutions for the safekeeping of township funds. It'll be based on my evaluation of the performance and solvency of the institution, as well as past performance in exercising due care and prudence in managing the custody of township funds. So I've gone through the security, the, not the security, the institutions that we have worked with, as well as some others. I wanted to provide a good range of both national, regional, and local financial institutions that we could do business with. And those are presented here in this resolution. You know, the, the local banks are all at least $200 million in capitalization. So they're still pretty sizable. And then, of course, you've got the nationals like JP Morgan and Bank of America in there as well. And the reason that you look at both of those is because a regional or a local bank may give you better rates on investment products for savings funds and things like that, that a national bank like JP Morgan, were nothing to JP Morgan, you know, but to other regional and, and, and local banks, that, that, that may be something that, you know, is, is, gives us the ability to, to leverage for a better return. So. Any questions?
Motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky.
Support.
Support by trustee Vicky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next, we have payroll and vouchers for February 12th. Unless there's any changes, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
And last is Germaine.
I move with Germaine.
Motion by clerk Brooke.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. See everybody in two weeks.